Okay, we are here tonight for a work session of Stillwater Area Public Schools, District 834. And we are, I'll just pass it over to Superintendent Lansfield to get us started.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Oh, not for a work session.
Chair Petrie and fellow board directors. We have a great presentation tonight that will be provided by Director Perry. And it's Learning Technology in Our Schools. During this last year and previous years, there have been a lot of updates and great things going on to better support our students, our staff, and our families. And he'll be here tonight presenting that information. Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks for having me. We're going to cover a lot of territory tonight. And so as a part of the board materials, I made sure that you all had a copy of the technology plan, and I left a printed copy for you as well. We're not going to go through it in detail, but I am going to reference a few pages from it and wanted to make sure that you had quick reference. I also wanted to use the tech plan as an anchor for this conversation. Some folks may know, others may not, that we have a pretty rigorous tech planning process in our district. And anytime people are looking at the system and asking what's going on, and there's a lot of that right now, there is a plan, and we are at a place in that plan on a continuum trying to get somewhere. And so I wanted us to start with the tech plan and end with the tech plan. So really, we can, this conversation is a lot about where are we Stillwater Area Public Schools in October of 2021? How did we get here and where are we going? And so I think on the agenda posted, this presentation is called Power School. And if there's one thing that can sum up where we are at right now, that's it. It sits inside of a larger context, but it is a very pivotal part in what we're doing to upgrade our systems and move the district forward with technology. So it'll be a large portion of the presentation. For anybody looking, I believe this presentation is posted with the agenda and that link in it should be live. If not, reach out, I can get you a copy of the tech plan. I also believe it's on our website. We always keep our tech plan posted and available, and so it's always there for people to view. The current tech plan that we have is 2019 through 2022. It expires this June, so we are at the end of a three-year journey. And so it's fitting that there's a lot of change happening right now, because this is the culmination of three years of work. So I'm going to dig into that a little bit more. But the tech council that created this plan, I want you to know, involves a lot of teachers, principals, some parent involvement, folks in IT, especially those that work on the integration of technology and curriculum. You'll notice it's a learning technology plan. There's not a lot of conversation in this plan about TCP IP and wireless access points and DHCP addressing. We're talking about classrooms, what kids and teachers need to teach and learn, how we keep those resources available to them, and what the cost is of doing so. So this is a learning technology plan, not a technology infrastructure plan like you may be more traditionally accustomed to. We will be putting the tech council together again this year. So this plan expires in 2022. My expectation is that we will have a new tech plan to present to the board probably in that April-May timeframe. And then the board will have the option of adopting that plan before this one expires. And that'll talk about the next three years. So that would be a July of 2022 forward. The tech plan starts with the vision. So the vision for technology is all very student-focused. So students can find and access their educational resources anytime, from anywhere. You'll hear me talk about that quite a bit. Personalized learning environments provide each student with unimpeded access to their unique educational resources. And a lot of this has to do with the fact that technology has the potential to enable students to have customized learning platforms. So different software systems that know where that student is at, as opposed to the spot in class where everybody's at the same place at the same time. Students and teachers have regular and reliable access to standard classroom technology equipment that enables them to present and engage with each other in a collaborative learning environment. And that feeds into the last point here, that students learn and succeed in mixed-mode environments where they have access to other students, teachers, and a web of knowledge and resources. And I really like to hit this point, that technology is a part of a mixed-mode environment. It does not replace it. It does not supplant it. In our modern world, students need to know how to interface with other human beings in person. They also need to understand how to collaborate online. And so it's not an either-or situation, it's a both-and, and technology serves a really important role in preparing our students for their futures. So this is, covers some of those same points. You'll hear me talk about this stuff a lot, the anytime-anywhere learning. This is really about students always having access to their classroom, potentially their teacher and their peers. It means that there are technology systems that ensure that when a student walks out of the school, they don't leave all their learning resources behind. So it's really that simple. It doesn't necessarily mean online learning, it doesn't necessarily mean electronic textbooks, it doesn't necessarily mean anything is different about the classroom, other than the fact that when the student goes home, they still have technology-enabled access to the classroom. So that's the kid that forgot their homework, doesn't know what they need to do, gets stuck on an assignment and needs to ask a question. Anytime-anywhere means those resources are available always. Regular and reliable access, we'll continue to talk about, this means that students and teachers have regular access to technology, and when they get that technology in their hands, it works. A pretty basic concept, but if you talk to any teacher in the classroom, the first, second, or third time they pull out a piece of technology and it doesn't work, they stop wasting their precious teaching time. You know, you go to elementary school, teachers juggle assignments and focus of the student body about every 11 minutes. If you spend six minutes trying to get technology working, you've lost over half your time. And so you'll find that teachers don't have a whole lot of patience for technology that doesn't work. And so when we want it to be effective in the classroom, it has to be regular, reliable. Fully supported is really key. These are people. So fully supported means there's somebody there to fix the computer. It also means that there's somebody there to assist with the integration of technology in a lesson. So if we go back to that anytime-anywhere learning, how do we get those learnings that are happening in the classroom reflected in an online portal so that students can access that from home? Not all teachers are proficient in doing that. And being supported to do that work and to do it well is really important for teachers to be able to engage in supporting that anytime-anywhere learning environment. Because any point where they don't have the expertise, because they are expert teachers, not expert technologists, we need to support people there to help bring them to that level that they want to be at. And again, that's people and that's relationships. The instructional core is always there, because we really keep the focus through all of this technology on instruction. And then we get to the center of the rows, which is this unified experience. And we're starting to learn more about what that means in our district. Unified experience, to me, talks about the student's identity and login. So part of that is who am I? What is my schedule? What grade am I in? What's that basic information about me? And then how do I log in? And this becomes important, because as I'll show you later in the presentation, we use about 32 different learning databases. And so that's a lot of different resources that students need to access at various times in their day or in their learning, or depending on what grade level they're in. And when they get into those learning resources, those resources need to know who that student is, not just from a login perspective, but in relation to their parents and their teacher. So there are systems like Schoology that can message parents about work. They also need to know which classes to roster you into. And so it's both of those pieces around identity. And it applies to parents as well. You know, we've taken legitimate criticism over the years for having many systems that parents need to access, all with different usernames and passwords, all at different websites. And that's not a unified experience. Now, we've taken efforts to help knit that together, to automatically create parent accounts so they're tied to the same email, and we've made strides. But any parent in the district, myself included, can tell you it's a difficult experience. And getting all those systems set up takes about an hour, though we do have a path for parents to do that. So unified experience is the goal for parents, for students, and staff. I'm going to revisit this concept of old technology, new technology, and the innovation curve. So this is a pretty simple drawing, but it represents a lot, and it's really pivotal to where we're at as a district right now, especially when the questions come about the changes that have occurred and really getting down to that why. Why did we have to change? And so I'm going to go through a number of problem statements that will really help you understand why we needed to change. And then I'm going to address what happens when we make this change going from the older technology to the newer technology. And I apologize, this list is a little bit long. But what I want to point out is if you look at that older technology curve, you'll see it starts low, you make major improvements to technology, and then you get to this plateau point. And moving from a plateau to a new upward curve of innovation with technology is difficult. It means disrupting a lot of systems, and you don't usually do it unless you have to. And so these problem statements that I'm going to go through really get to the heart of why were we at a plateau? Why couldn't we improve anymore? Why is this change necessary? So it's a few pages, so try and bear with me for a minute here, but our old student information system doesn't support two-factor authentication. This is a real simple security issue. All systems need to support two-factor authentication, especially systems that are protecting our vault of data on our students and families. That's one of those things, it's at the peak, it's not going to change. This is what that system does. If you want a different authentication system, you need a different student information system. Our old system wasn't compatible with single sign-on providers. So in terms of that unified experience, there was no moving to a unified experience with our old student information system. It used its own in-house authentication database. And there was no indication, even with proactive outreach from the company, that that was ever going to change. Has limited API support for future integrations, and this has to do with how it exchanges data with other systems. A part of the ethos we're going to talk about in our technology systems is your student information system, this is your data warehouse, this is your state reporting, this is attendance, this is state and federal compliance. Your learning management system, for us, which is Schoology, that has all of your assignments, your grades, your assessments, your scores. And then you have a specialized assessment system that focuses on formative and summative assessment that's common across the district. Schoology doesn't connect to Illuminate. So we had Illuminate and Schoology in our system, Illuminate being the assessment, Schoology being the learning system. And this is a problem, because our teachers are using grade books in Schoology, but we're telling them to do assessments in Illuminate that don't connect to their grade book. And that's, it's not even a problem where I blame either company. It's two different companies with two different softwares, and it's incredibly complicated to get them to talk. And without an impetus for them to do so, they're not going to. There were issues. So our old student information system would tell you that they had standards-based grade books. I'll tell you that they did not. What a lot of people say is you can do anything standards-based, you just make it a score one, two, three, or four. But that's not a truly standards-aligned grade book, which is really important at an elementary school as we move forward, and we want to be identifying what the power standards are and how students are achieving those standards. So we didn't have and weren't going to have a standards-based grade book. Our old system doesn't allow auto imports. I'll talk more about this later, but basically, the long and short is that we couldn't import data into the old system unless a human being sat down, did all the alignments, and manually processed it. And these days, we need databases exchanging information with each other. And so that was another one of those things that was indicated that that wasn't ever going to change. There were synchronization issues between that system and Schoology, which created grade synchronization errors. I'm not going to lie, we still have issues with that. It's a major issue trying to get grade books to synchronize. But I'll tell you why we're in a better position now than we were before, and I'll just tease at it a little bit. Schoology was purchased by Power School. And so now they're being developed with a native integration. We just haven't had the benefit of that at this time. So we're still doing sort of the old-style integration. We really couldn't do any custom reporting. We have things like our bar report, building assets, reducing risks. That report probably takes 80 hours or so to put together. We're expanding bar, we're expanding reporting, it's absolutely worth it. But an area where technology excels in is data analytics. And used well, technology should be able to reduce the time that it takes us to produce reports like this. I don't care if it takes 200 hours to build the report the first time, after that, it should be the click of a button. And so we really want to start exploring more automated reports that are custom to the initiatives that we have in our district. Illuminate was the assessment platform I mentioned before. It didn't have a way really for parents to access it. Did have a parent access module, but the only workable solution that we could come to working with the company was that we would have to manually create a parent account for every parent in our district every time there's an enrollment. We are just too large to be dedicating people to manually doing that. We need systems that integrate, either through the SSO or through the student information system or something. I talked before, our old systems took over an hour for parents to set up all their accounts. I think the lowest time I had on that reported to me was 45 minutes. We didn't have any kind of an early warning system. So an early warning system is a data report that's always available to principals, that tells you when students are entering a risk category. So you don't want to wait until students are completely falling behind and need to be referred to specialized educational services to get them caught up. You want that early warning system to tell you something's going on. And to do that, you need to live correlate a number of data points, you need to define what those are, attendance, discipline, address changes, assessment scores, there's a number of different data points we can pull from. So you need to define those and configure your early warning system to report it. Our old system didn't have anything like that. It was a consistent frustration of principals and other administrators that there was no, it was like, yeah, principals can get this data, but you need to run five or six different reports and correlate the data and then make your determinations, and that just never happened. The only time that happened is when I ran the reports and went out to the schools a couple times a year to work with the principals, and they all said, this is great, how do we get this all the time? And then we did not have any kind of an online enrollment system for new students. All enrollments were handled by paper. So those are things where we're hitting the top of this technology curve, and it's a lot. And so when we start trying to answer the question, how do we solve these things, it becomes really clear that you're going to need to evaluate new systems, you're going to need to replace systems, and you're going to need to start a new technology curve or a new innovation curve. And this is hugely challenging, because as you can see in the chart up there, the new curve starts lower than the old curve. And so that gap represents loss. That's lost expertise from staff that have used the old system for the last 20 years, and parents and students and everybody that's accustomed to it. The integrations on the backend and a lot of what we've learned how to make these systems work together, we now have new systems that we need to make work together. But you've opened doors now for an upward trajectory to solve the problems that you've identified and move forward. That's going to take time. Our last systems that we implemented, I mean, we've spent the last five years soup-to-nuts reintegrating everything, integrating things that had never been integrated. Nothing really was integrated five, six years ago, and now it all is. And of course, when you undo and change that, people feel that. To move this forward, and it's part of the technology plan there, we posted an RFP. So this was in April of 2020. And what's significant about the RFP is we specifically put our criteria in that we're looking for a student information system, a learning management system, and an assessment platform that have an online enrollment and online forms processing attached with them. So we were not evaluating a single technology, a replacement to our student information system or anything else. We were evaluating the whole bucket, that whole environment of software working together for what our future integrated environment could look like. So I just touched on a number of these, so I don't want to go back over all of them, but I do want to emphasize that the two-factor and the lack of communications between systems is what presents the greatest challenge for us in the systems that we had. And the new systems have more potential that will let us get around that. Our old systems have what I call a downhill data flow. And I don't need you to be able to read everything that's on the board, those are 32 or 33 learning systems that are in place. But you can notice that all the arrows are going to the right. And this is just that idea of, this was years of work to get all of these systems flowing together, but only in one direction. So moving forward to Power School, which is in our technology plan, I don't have the page right in front of me here, I think it's page 58. But it was really about how do we get this circle working together, where our student information system, our learning management system, our assessment system, and our reporting tool, which we don't currently have and haven't had, are natively integrated and always have that same data. Now, there's two sides to this wheel I want to point out. On the right side, it's all downstream, downhill feeds. Those are learning systems that basically just need to be rostered. So that reality still exists. But what we want to move to and what we're working on now is what you see on the left side. And so specifically, these are some of the challenges I mentioned. So we need data to go from our student information system to our lunch system, that's School Cafe. Lunch applications are processed in School Cafe, and students either do or don't qualify for the National School Lunch Program. Their qualification status, their PIN number, and any balances that they have need to go back into the student information system, because they need to flow into systems like School Messenger and forms for parents to be able to access. We haven't been able to do that reverse feed except manually, and it was only done a couple times a year for state compliance. Same thing with Versitrans. So Versitrans, our bus system, so we're working on getting data, not just going into Versitrans, but how do we get all those buses and routes to come back? And then we'll talk more about School Pass as time goes on. School Pass is actually a full emergency management system. It also has a number of features like bus attendance, parent deployed attendance, so parents can submit from an app. It does carpool pickup lines. We'll be piloting at Lake Elmo to do those pickup lines to try and get the traffic off of the county roads there. It's been pretty backed up. And then it replaces our visitor management system that we have in place right now. As a part of that emergency management system, it can help manage things like doing attendance during a fire drill, or actually helping you with reunification if you have a serious emergency where you have to evacuate a campus. And so we've been working on getting some kind of a system in place for a while, and this fills a number of those gaps. But it'll take time to implement. So right now, we're really focused on attendance. And then all of that, in large part, needs to flow down to School Messenger so that we can email parents about busing issues, or make phone calls about busing issues, about submitting end-of-day attendance reports, or some of that lunch information that we talked about before. So this is kind of where the system leaves us in terms of moving forward. And I'm not going to cover everything on there, because I don't want to get too repetitive. And our third-party vendor integrations, one of the things I really want to point out, well, two things really. So one, this is lower cost over time. The overtime's really important, because system migrations aren't cheap. It takes a lot to forklift something that's been in our schools for 20 years. But the pricing that we got will save us money over the years. Something else I want to point out on here is Smart School K-12, which sort of represents the ideal of what we're going for in some of these new integrations. So Smart School K-12 is the payment system for parents. And it's one of those other systems that parents have another user account that they have to go access, this is paying for field trips and all kinds of other things. Smart School K-12 integrates with Power School in such a way that when a parent gets on a computer and logs into Power School, they have a Smart School K-12 icon in their parent portal. And when they click on that icon, it opens up their portal for Smart School K-12 with their students there, ready to make payments. And so that's the first system we were able to get online in such a state that there's literally no other access needed for parents. And so that definitely represents the gold standard of where we're trying to get to and the kind of integration that can happen with Power School at the center of this environment. So there's still a lot of work to do on the other systems, but I think that that's worth I really like where this is getting us, but especially because it's been talked about a lot in the community, and obviously, this has been top of mind since school started. I want to talk about just quickly some of the challenges that we've had this year. So we've struggled with automating our account creation, which was very difficult to do on our old system and is proving to be very difficult to do on this new system. It's probably the highest priority item we have. I shouldn't say probably, it is. When a student enrolls in our system, we want the student and parents to instantly have accounts. And that is not easy to accomplish. We're still working on it, the company's working very closely with us, and we're hoping to have that resolved soon. What it means in the interim is that we're manually batching these account processes through, and that adds time delay. We're trying to run them every week, but that means that things aren't created that night. We finally just got the parent attendance app rolled this week. There's going to be some tuning on that to get that working properly, so that was a little late in the rollout. We'll be working on the reintegration and pushing that to higher-level integration of all of our other systems for at least a year. We spent five or six years, as I mentioned before, getting all this stuff integrated before. I think a year timeline is actually pretty aggressive. We've got the team to do it, but it definitely takes time. Often, you're really working on one system at a time. And so when you have so many systems to bring up, we prioritize. What are the systems that are most core to our students' learning that we need to focus on first, and then that's where we focus first? So that's where you're seeing, we already have things like Schoology and CSO and Clever and Class Link and all those running, because those are really a part of the daily experience. We're still challenged with the district-wide learning curve. To help combat that, we've had morning meetings every day in August to support our office staff in getting onto the new system. And now we meet every Thursday, so people can come and bring their questions, and we talk about new feature rollout. And it's kind of a professional learning community where everybody is able to help each other. And then, of course, our other limitation has really just been lack of resource. And that's not as much a complaint as it's just where we're at. And depending on the resources you have, things take longer. I kind of wish I'd put the chart in here, there's the triangle with speed and quality and cost, and the idea you can have two. You know, you can have things really fast at a low cost, but your quality is going to go down. For us, what we're really lacking is the speed, right? We can get the costs down and we can keep the quality up, but it's going to take us a while to get everything implemented. And so I'm going to ask for a little more patience from folks as we work on that. Can't talk about the challenges without the accomplishments. So we now have an online enrollment system, which we haven't had before. So all new enrollments and families coming to the district now complete that online, often in our district office with support if needed. We talked about the integrated Smart School K-12, kind of the gold standard for what we expect when we integrate systems in the future. The system integrates well with Gmail, which is what our teachers and staff all use. We have the single sign-on enabled with two-factor security for all of our staff. So grade books and all student information is now protected by that two-factor authentication. We're reintegrated with Clever, CSO, Schoology, and a number of our other learning apps. And then the assessment platform there, Performance Matters, we've implemented, and we've been able to migrate all of the assessments that teachers had created in Illuminate. So teachers that put that work into creating their Illuminate assessments aren't losing any of that, though they do need to learn the new platform. And then we have implemented the Google-based parent accounts, which is something I know not everybody is happy with. The Google authentication for parent accounts, it's a different way of logging in. It's a way our staff and students are used to, but not a way that all our parents are used to. The advantage is that it lets us do two things. First, it lets us support single sign-on for parents. So Google authentication integrates with most of our partners. And so again, it opens that door of possibility that we can take away that barrier that parents have to create those additional accounts. It also means that parents can opt into using two-factor for their own account, which is a good security feature for us to be offering them. So here we are, back at the curve. So there's a lot of possibility, a lot of possibility we didn't have before, and it will carry us over the next few years as we work on the new technology plan beyond where we were at. But just one more time, I want to recognize that for our staff and our parents and people that are really familiar and maybe had things about the old systems they really liked, we're at that point where it feels like, hey, this isn't better than before. We have to work to get to better than before. And we will get to better than before. But the transition right now, all of that integration work has to be redone. And so I just, I really want to emphasize that. Our current reality, so we get into some of our funding and other issues here, is that we spend $2.8 million a year on technology. That's what the district has committed. That's $1.3 million that actually goes into technology resources, whether we're talking about internet services or devices, or some of our learning subscriptions. All of that comes out of the learning technology budget, and then the remainder of that $2.8 is the support staff that I talked about before. There's a note up there about some other districts and what they do for funding. What's significant, I think, about Stillwater is that we don't have a dedicated funding resource for technology. And this becomes a problem when the costs for technology keep going up. The costs for devices have gone up, we've seen quite a bit of inflation in that. And we've also seen some inflation in the area of just, we need to add more services. And we've also seen some inflation in the area of just, we need to add more services. Specifically, I'll talk in a minute about security services that cost more. But right now, the current reality is that staff devices are being replaced at about every eight years, seven if we can get away with it. Student devices, I say five plus up there. Chromebooks rarely last more than five years. At that point, there's so much failing on them that it's not really a matter of choice to keep them running. They won't. And then classroom projectors, I have every 10 plus. It's pretty hodgepodge as you go through the district, whether we've been able to support upgrades or the PTA has supported upgrades or what. But what I can say with assurity is that there are many, many, many classrooms in our district working on projectors that are over 10 years old. The systemic replacement of that classroom equipment is a huge problem because it's twofold. It has a high cost and it has a high timeline. Even the screens and the materials we order these days, vendors are telling us you're six to eight months out. And so this is hard because when something breaks, especially really old technology, so far, we've been able to find some kind of a used replacement to put in its place, but it is difficult to support, and that really eats at that regular and reliable status. This is a chart from our technology plan showing all the Chromebooks that expired this year. That's the 2021-22 school year. Fortunately, we did get COVID funds to help with some of the replacement. This chart is from 2019. It does not incorporate all of the devices that have been purchased by PTAs and building funds over the years. I just want to reiterate, our student technology levels are back to what we call 2016 levels. So teachers have gotten used to a much higher level of technology access than that, and it's gone. We had pretty much every two classrooms sharing a cart. Now, it's more like every three or four classrooms. It gets worse as you get to the upper grade levels. And so you won't see devices in classrooms like you did before. And again, it's not that we need kids on devices all day, but there are things they do in science and world language. There are online textbooks and various things that we expect them to access. So what does the technology levy provide? We've talked about this quite a bit. This is devices for kids and staff. This is upgrades for classroom technology. This takes the technology budget off of the general fund. But this is where I wanted to point out that piece about security because we added as another line, and getting into the details can be a little bit complicated, which is why I thought we might be able to, I could share some of that here. So when we talk about security, we're talking about our firewall and intrusion detection. So that's how we not only keep stuff out of our network, but if something gets into our network, it helps shut down some of the illicit activity that malware might have. We've got email and social engineering. So two-factor authentication is a huge piece of that. Two-factor authentication is the number one thing we can do to protect our accounts from being hacked from the outside. When somebody accidentally reveals their password, the two-factor authentication will keep that other party from actually getting access to their account. And we just had an instance in the last couple of weeks here where that helped us. Viruses and malware usually seems like a pretty simple thing. You need an antivirus. But this is changing, and now insurance companies are starting to require endpoint protection, which is much more expensive than our traditional antivirus and requires an upgrade. I do not believe we will get insurance coverage on July 1st of 2022 if we don't have endpoint protection in our system. There's the authentication algorithms we use. That's really the two-factor authentication I'm talking about and how we protect our systems. Google Apps for Education is actually, I keep, as its own separate category. There are programs out there that can monitor things like Google Apps for Education and see what information is being shared out into the world. And when it's as clicking on a document and hitting share with the link, you have to watch your data a little bit more so you can make sure that things are being shared and be shared. And the software that covers is expensive. We've done some demo and trialing, but we haven't really gotten too far into it. We're having trouble getting any demo to tune in to really accurately identify that student data, and it shouldn't be shared, and that's what we want. Cryptoware and ransomware really connects to data pumps and disaster recovery. That's number one thing that we're threatened with today. They want to lock up our data and extort us for money. So making sure that we have proactive protections in our systems, number one, and then following up with the proper kind of backups is important. We have a number of backups in place. There are backups that we don't have to cold storage, which requires continuous assessment that isn't included in our budget today. We're working on a lot of policy and training for us, training for FERPA training, cyber safety training, specific phishing training, ensure staff know what to watch out for. People that aren't trained present vulnerability. We just built Phishing Expedition for staff and sent an email to 1,100 staff and people fall for the email. Now, this time, we gave them a little advance notice so that people didn't feel like we were sending out a trick without a treat. And so that advance notice helped people be a bit more wary of it, but we'll continue that phishing with our district. It's actually a service that's being offered through our insurance company. It tells you how involved you're getting. They want to see we've got proactive measures in place, or they won't cover us. And the national protection is in itself, and you hope you don't. Year after year after year, pushing our technology systems forward. We put this plan together without the thought that there would be a technology levy in the fall of 2021. And as glad as I am to see the potential that we'll have that support from our community, we may or we may not. And the passage of that levy isn't going to prevent us from pushing forward. What it will prevent is the systemic replacement of computers for teachers and students and the upgrades of devices in those classrooms. Much of what is going to come is going to be replacements for Chromebooks as required for MCA testing, and that will be pulled from the general fund or another budget resource because at some point, our back's going to be against a wall, and we're going to have to replace devices to meet state testing requirements. That's just a fact. Additionally, a number of the security measures that we're going to be put in, people aren't going to ask us with a please. They're going to tell us, either your district has these security measures, or you're not going to be insurable. And so some of those items are coming one way or the other. So I do think that we could have a much more stable technology system with the levy. I think people see, especially post-pandemic, how needed something like this is for our system. Our district needs reliable technology funding, whether it comes from the state or the federal government or our local community here supporting us. That's one of our greatest impediments to moving forward. So we just watched the video. There is one of only a few. It's not going to let me skip it. There we go. So I've taken up so much of your time, and I apologize. It's a lot of information to get through. Can I answer questions?
Thank you, John. Really appreciate that. That was a lot of information. Allison, did you have a question?
I did. Can you, I mean, I have a few questions, but one that was interesting to me is this early warning system that you were talking about because obviously, it's so related to student achievement and being able to catch students before they fall. Can you talk a little bit more about where we are with that, how that works? And, you know, is it, are there kind of universal criteria for when you catch someone? Or how does that work? And how would a parent see that, I guess?
Yeah, so an early warning system is not a parent system. Let me just start with that. It is a feature of Power School. We have not configured it. Getting the early warning system online is going to take quite a bit of work in tuning exactly what it is that we're looking to alarm on. So, you know, at the basics, you're looking at missing assignments, grade changes, attendance changes, or discipline. As we look at some of the higher-level analytic software capabilities of the component we didn't get into here today, which is who knew it, you can start looking at broader demographic data that gets into address changes. So you can tell if a student's being moved around a lot or custody changes or other things that might impact that student's stability in their learning environment. You can bring in things like MCA scores or other assessments that we offer to see if there's a dip in the reading scores or something else that might not be picked up by other elements. And on that level, there's not really to how much data we can pull in, but we do need to define it and tell the system how we want to delete it so that we can get that tuned to something that's really effective. I wouldn't say that it's something that's standard or packaged that you flip on default settings and it works.
Is that within the cost that you've paid for? Or is that a feature that's accessible, but we would have to pay more for that?
We have the early warning system that is included in the levy, and that ties into the data that our school has. The Power School that we knew, which is the analytic component, we're hoping to get to, but we just don't really have the resources to implement right now, has a much broader early warning system that can incorporate more data units from other systems. So it could take something from something like our Fastbridge reading system or the state MCA data, or it can actually pull data together and incorporate it. So there's sort of two levels that we can go with that.
Yeah, it's kind of crazy to hear that you're coming in a couple of times a year with information versus just on the spot having it. You know how much of this information kind of available readily?
I know.
I'll just say, it's kind of one of those standard reports that administration, many districts, in my last, it was ABC report, attendance behavior and course marks. And so every principal at any time could look at their ABC report and identify which kids do we need to provide support to. Kind of one of those things that a school administrator really relies on, and I'm just really excited for us to be able to.
Absolutely. Thank you for answering those.
Where do we stand right now? I know that devices, a certain number of devices and a certain kind of devices, are able to do state mandated testing. Where do we stand with that right now?
Due to the SFR funding that we received, we are going to be able to test this year, I would say then, for the foreseeable, you know, four-year timeframe. That comes at the cost of broad access to devices in classrooms. So that means some classrooms get access, but not all classrooms, or at least not regularly. Schools have to come up with more complicated sharing, and so it's an elementary than it does at middle, than it does at high school. High school at this point, really only doing checkout through the library, whereas they do more classroom sharing schedules in elementary.
Okay. Katie?
Kind of a follow-up to that. So if we're looking at our tech levy, if that does pass, what kind of access back to students for one-to-one devices? Would it be that they can only access those devices at school and live at school? Is that something where we'd really pair kids? Like, what could be expected if that does pass?
So if that passes, we're definitely talking about what I think of as universal access, all kids having a similar device for their learning environment. Part of the council's job and the district, working with curriculum committees and others, is to answer those questions, and that's a lot of the work that we would do this year. And a lot of that comes down to the age appropriateness and how schools want to handle certain situations. So to give an example of some of the solutions that are employed, you've got high school programs where the kids have a Chromebook in their backpack and it goes back and forth. You have programs in middle school where there's days that the kids bring their devices and there's days that they don't. So there's device at school days and device at home days. There's elementary programs across the different levels where devices are home kept home, brought to school and kept at school. And you can flip-flop that. You might have your younger elementary kid's device at school and take it home once a week or for special projects or for other things. You might have your older kids have that access at home more regularly and have them bring it to school for certain activities. So the educational program really needs to define how we would want that to look. But these are devices assigned to individual students, not classrooms, for that student's learning.
Thank you. Could I throw in one more follow? You mentioned that tackle. Do you have any idea of a timeline of when that would be convened? Has that started the process? And how do you get people to?
So in the past, I've sent out an all-call to the district, looking for teachers and making sure that we cover our bases for elementary, middle, and school, target a few administrators on the group, and then some of those learning technology planner, and reach out to one or two parents that can give us some of that at-home feedback. My mission is to reform that committee after the levy vote.
Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you for meeting with me last Friday. It was a good conversation. I probably could have gone for another hour. Couple of things. The one thing I didn't ask, and you kind of brought up, are you guys doing all of this integration yourself? Or are you working with a partner? Are you working with organizations like SchoolEg and stuff like that?
Yeah, so it's a mix. We have in-house software that is what I call an intermediary database. And so that plugs into systems like Power School and collects all the data and then helps us reformat it for the receiving systems and then securely deliver that data to them. So it is a 30-product one that we house, operate, and keep on our systems.
But consult, what about RISKS consulting, stuff like that? Are you guys?
We don't use any consulting services. This is all in-house.
One other quick question. You mentioned that you're currently using Alight for, we were, you were, but you are keeping it because certain teachers have?
No, Alight was removed from our system in June. And now it's assessment.
Kind of falls in line there. So the Performance Matters is that that's compatible under the Power School?
It is under the Power School umbrella. There's a native connection between Power School and Performance Matters.
So right now, teachers can see, because you were talking about the gradebook and the assessments, can they see both now that we're migrated?
We haven't rolled out any intensive training to our teachers on this at this point. But all three of those systems talk. So SchoolEg, Performance Matters, and Power School exchange data.
Because I would imagine that, much like this early warning system, is going to be very important for our teachers to be working with students. Is there a timeframe on when you'll be able to train that? I'm assuming that might be a budget issue as well?
Yeah, it's a huge budget issue. Don't have a timeframe. Teachers spend time together developing common formative and common summative assessments so that we can, and teachers specifically can meet to compare results and see what's working and not working with kids is where that's really powerful. And so a part of it is training them on how to use the software, but the other part is providing the time for them to spend working together.
And then I just had one more question. Obviously, I think that everyone at the board table has probably heard some good and bad with the rollout, so I'm glad you have kind of that adoption curve. And I know I've talked to you about this, and you acknowledge that it's been a bumpy ride, and it will be bumpy a little while longer, but then it will flatten out. Can you give people maybe a little bit more of a specific timetable for families at home who maybe are struggling? What are the common struggles? Any tips that you could share that someone maybe saved your call desk a few calls?
Yeah, so we're trying to get Loom videos put together that sort of help parents on how to log in and how to sign up for conferences and these sort of things. So look for those videos. It's where we can actually demonstrate the steps and the clicks that people go through. And it's been on back burner, but as we start figuring out what these resources are specifically that parents need, putting together some kind of a webpage that we house them in is on my radar, but haven't really quite gotten there yet.
Last one. Is there any, I know we talk a lot about how we speak a lot of different languages in our schools. Is there any kind of translation or is this platform available in other languages? Or how would that work for those families, bilingual families?
So most online translation is now done through Google Translate. And it's actually an area where we should focus more on in terms of parent education. I think a lot of times, you'll find that when you have families that have more technology skill but lower language skill, you'll find that they've already got their phones and computers set to do the translation for any websites that they visit. We still also do a lot of translation, especially for Spanish, through School Messenger. And so that's a system that's staying onboard. And there are some translation features built into the software, but it's hit and miss depending on.
Thank you. Tina?
Hi. You were talking a little bit about insurance, and I should probably load this forward. My curiosity a little bit to what we pay for insurance, I don't see this in your budget from 1920. Does that not come out of your budget that comes out of the general fund?
Correct. I would have to defer to John Tine and his department for that. I interface a lot with the ins folks in terms of making sure that we meet their technical requirements, but not in terms of paying the bill.
Okay. And then I just see a couple of things on here, and I can't recall what it was exactly you said we needed for security purposes. What program? I see, and here we have cyber safety and cloud backup and security, and that's basically it that comes out of your budget currently?
Correct. I'm thinking right now it's probably in a similar range.
Cold storage. Thank you.
I just had a question. I want to go back to the whole idea about the mixed mode environment of learning. And I wonder if you could just sort of give us an idea, and I'm assuming that this is the sort of thing that other districts around us that do have dedicated sorts of funding for technology are probably already offering to their students. But what does that actually look like? Can you sort of sketch that out for us? From a student perspective, what does that actually feel like and look like?
Yeah, let me try. It covers a lot of ground, depending on what classroom you're in and what district you're in and what resources you're talking about. I had the opportunity to be in a first-grade classroom a few years ago and see how literacy was being taught using technology and books. And so what the teacher had going in that classroom was each group of students was doing something different. I believe there were three activities that they were engaged in and rotating between. And then there was kind of a fourth activity where the teacher was actually pulling one student over to confer with them, and that basically means go over there, reading with them one-on-one, and really see where they're at and help them individually. Well, I, I don't know that I remember all the stations, but I think flashlight reading was one of those stations where students use a small flashlight so it only illuminates one word at a time. Flashlights are very engaging with first graders. But then another station, they were using iPads and they would take a picture of a writing that was at their level and record themselves reading what was written on the page. And then that was entered into seesaw as a learning artifact that the teacher can see, that the reading interventionist can see and that mom and dad can see. And so it wasn't the LBI to literacy instruction. It's just opponent so that we're creating some artifacts along the way, that breadcrumb trail so that everybody involved in the student's learning can see what it is that they're doing. And that's, that's one of the really powerful subtle ways in which that mixed mode technology can help. Because as most parents will tell you traditionally, we don't know what happened in the classroom. We wait until our kids get off the school bus and then we ask them how the school day went. They say fine. What happened? And they say nothing. You know, and that, that kind of goes back and forth. And so seeing this kind of mixed mode technology that gives that parent a glimpse in the evening of what happened during the day was a real powerful learning model. There's other things, especially at older grade levels, you'll see, whether they're coding robotics or something with, with programming itself. In our classes, especially at high school, a number of devices that, that they connect probes to computers in order to measure acceleration and temperature and they're, they're graphing their observations. And so it, it's really science. They're just using the computer as the hub for their assessment tools that they're trying to collect data from as they observe their world. So there's a number of different ways that it can look depending on the classes and, and what's, what teacher's trying to teach. But some of them are academic and then some of them are more in that realm of communication and collaborating with the home.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Allison?
Are you doing, I think it sounds like, I mean, we have this initial, right? Power School, this kind of initial jump in kind of migrating onto Power School. But it sounds like there'll be other migrations that may come smaller.
Yeah, my, my expectation is that things are going to quiet down quite a bit from here. Getting through conferences was a pretty big deal. We weren't quite ready for those, for the ready, set, goes. And, and so now we have our school conference tool up and running. That's not changing. We've got the, the attendance app out, so that's not changing. Things are, things are going to settle down. It is not our intention to overwhelm families and teachers and everybody with more and more change. But sure enough, getting to this point represents a pretty monumental shift.
One, one thing that I'm always wondering, and I'm sure you too as someone in technology, but are we ever going to do any surveying, any, any like learning on how we could maybe roll these kind of, this kind of a project out better, create more efficiencies, meet the needs of our families better or?
All in support.
Okay. So maybe this was really helpful.
Okay. If we have no further questions, thank you so much, John. This was really, really interesting and, and a lot of, a lot of information. So I appreciate you coming forward with it today. So we will just take a, just a five-minute break and then we will begin our business meeting. Thanks.
They travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you. Director Kuntz, can you state the school board goals?
Sure. In partnership with community, parents, and students, the School Board of Stillwater Area Public Schools ensures excellence in education by increasing student achievement for all students, securing long-term financial stability of the district, increasing community trust and engagement.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight? Director Kuntz is our second. Director Sherman, all those in favor of approving the agenda tonight, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. We do not have a student report tonight, so we are going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the superintendent report.
Okay, thank you. Chair Petrie and Board Directors, our very own Early Childhood Family Education, ECFE, program was featured on a Minnesota Department of Education's webinar last week. Parent educators from Stillwater shared how they've been able to engage with families and keep young children learning through nature-based activities during the COVID-19 pandemic. Stillwater's ECFC began providing outdoor learning opportunities for young families in December 2020. They've continued to provide outdoor activities for all ages from birth to age eight ever since, and they've always been a big hit with our students. Learning outside has proven to be a safe and fun way for young children to connect and learn along with teachers and other kids their age. And we now have free take-home COVID-19 test kits. They're available in our school health offices by parent request. Vault testing kits are currently available. The saliva test kits can be taken home and returned to Oakland or Stillwater Middle Schools or the high school before 10:00 a.m. on Tuesdays or Thursdays to be delivered to the testing lab. The district has also ordered a supply of Binax Now over-the-counter at-home testing kits. We expect to receive these rapid results nasal swab tests in the next month, and will offer them to parents for our students as soon as they become available. And it's just two weeks from Election Day. District taxpayers will be asked to renew an expiring operating levy, as well as consider new funding to help maintain quality learning and invest in technology for kids in classrooms. If you weren't able to join us last night for a virtual levy meeting, I encourage you to watch the video on our website. We spent time reviewing how levy funds would be used, and we answered questions from our community members. Our current levy is expiring, and this is the last chance for us to renew. If it is not passed, we will lose about $12 million for next year, and we'll have to make significant budget reductions. I encourage you to get out and vote. You can vote early at the Washington County Government Center, or the Woodbury Library, or you can vote on Election Day. You can find more information online at stillwaterschools.org/levy2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Board Chair Report. I have nothing for tonight, so we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, A is minutes of the October 5th special meeting, B is minutes of October 7th closed session, C is minutes of October 7th business meeting, D is the dispersment register, E is accept gifts and donations, F is Century College Joint Powers Agreement for 2021 to 2022, G is district-wide snow removal and pavement treatment, and H is Human Resources Personnel Report. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, Director Hockert, is there a second? Director Porveni, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're moving on to reports. We have one report tonight. It is a professional development update. Dr. Caleb Drexler Booth, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Petrie, Directors of Boards, Superintendent Landsfeld. Happy to share with you an update tonight of our professional learning opportunities in which our teachers will be engaged this year. So as we consider... Getting our PowerPoint ready? That's okay? All right. As we consider professional development this year, it's important to consider the different forms in which professional development can take. So we certainly have our traditional calendar structure that builds in dedicated days for professional learning, non-student contact days. We have three of those remaining, November 2nd, January 17th, and April 15th. But we also have our job-embedded, ongoing professional development. I'll highlight that a little bit more later in future slides, but some specific key opportunities in that area regard our mentor program, our professional learning communities, and our instructional coaching. With staff and students largely back in physical classrooms this year, our professional learning is focused on meeting the needs impacted by last year's changing learning models, especially as we consider our foundational literacy skills and social-emotional learning with student supports. We need to also take this opportunity to reconnect with our internal systems to support continuous improvement, especially in curriculum and instruction, aligning standards with assessments, and providing interventions and extensions to support learning. Take a quick preview of our plans for November 2nd. The work that I highlighted began in August workshops, looking at social-emotional learning and literacy, but this work needs to continue as part of our November 2nd day. Elementary staff will be engaged in a number of literacy-focused sessions, as well as responsive classroom practices and other topics related to specific subject areas and student programming. Of special note, I would highlight the Letterland refresher in place for our K-1 staff. This also coincides with a systems-level fidelity check of our program implementation with coaching support to support our grade levels. Additionally, in response to our needs analysis, we've determined to extend the structured literacy program to second grade. So all second-grade teachers will participate in an all-day Letterland training on November 2nd to infuse phonics and phonemic awareness lessons into their classrooms. Third through fifth-grade teachers will deepen their understanding of PRESS, which is an intervention system we use that's been designed by the Minnesota Center for Reading Research out of the University of Minnesota in partnership with the Minnesota Reading Corps. Early childhood and secondary schools also have a number of learning activities built into this day that focus on strengthening relationship building, addressing social-emotional learning needs. Additionally, staff will have dedicated time to focus on those high-yield instructional strategies and to examine the alignment of standards with curricular units and assessment plans. In addition to those dedicated days for professional development, Stillwater teachers also have access to a variety of ongoing job-embedded professional development opportunities. Specifically, I mentioned our mentorship program. This is a specific program to support those staff new to Stillwater, to identify a teacher to work with that individual one-on-one. Additionally, our teachers participate in professional learning communities, subject-area teams, grade-level teams that come together to look at their curriculum, answering four basic questions. What is it we want students to know and be able to do? How will we know if they are able to do it? What will we do if they don't? And how do we extend opportunities for those who already know it? More continued development in that area is necessary, and providing time is always one of the challenges, to find that collaboration time for staff to get together. Additionally, our observation walkthroughs and learning visits provide a lens into the classroom, so teachers can see each other teaching, administrators can get in and provide that ongoing support as well. And we also have our instructional coaching program. We have staff assigned to every building to support teachers in going through impact cycles and wanderings and how to go deeper into various elements of instruction. Much of this at elementary will be focused on literacy, and at secondaries, our instructional coaches are vital supports in helping staff align those systems and function in professional learning communities. In addition to those pieces, I'm also excited to share some specific opportunities for extended learning. The first would be the Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, commonly referred to as Letters. So both Karen Lateral and I have previously participated in Volume 1 of this intensive professional development. And so we are happy to extend this opportunity for teachers to learn about the science of reading in this environment. So we've extended an opportunity, put out an interest survey, and we'll be selecting about 15 teachers to begin this journey. This will engage staff in over 40 hours of professional learning, personal professional learning, reading the materials, watching the videos, engaging in the instructional strategies with students, and then also meeting with Karen and me to debrief the various units and to talk about how we might continue rolling these conversations out across the district. It is very time-intensive. Like I said, it's 40 hours minimum of personal reflection and reading and preparation. Similarly, our reading interventionists will continue to deepen their understanding of Orton-Gillingham-supported instructional practices. They've begun that work in over the summer, and will continue conversations moving forward, looking for additional resources that might be able to support them in their work in those intensive Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions. Lastly, I would just mention that our Gate teachers and Amigos Unios teachers will continue some of the ongoing year-long conversations and reflections that they've been engaged with to meet the specific needs of their learners as well. So we're proud to maximize the opportunities for professional development, and we certainly efficiently manage our limited resources to focus on areas of need and high impact. That said, funding challenges do limit and delay the full impact of our initiatives, whether it be curriculum improvements or applying professional learning into the classroom, utilizing professional learning communities, and so on. So by securing full funding for professional development, we will be able to strengthen and refine our cycles of continuous improvement and build teacher leadership into that process. We'll be able to provide time for research-supported and continue the ongoing job-embedded professional development. Might look like early release or late start days, might be adding professional development days to the calendar, providing release time for teachers to engage in collaboration and learning outside of the classroom. We'll also be able to build that internal capacity, build that expertise in the district, and provide that curricular leadership to support our various subject areas and grade levels, and create that horizontal alignment and vertical articulation of skills. We'll also finally be able to utilize a district data snapshot to track our improvement efforts, strengthening our monitoring and assessment systems to ensure student growth. And so certainly, part of that would be the performance matters and building in our common assessments and see how those line up with MCAs and FastBridge data, and have a resource to really dig in to our students and identify how we can serve them better and what might be some root causes for challenges. So the task is big, but this is the work of an organization that's dedicated to learning and certainly for our Teaching and Learning Department. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hey, thank you very much. Are there questions? Director Kuntz?
Thank you very much. Tell me a little bit about Letters. You say you're selecting a few teachers, you're training them, it's 40 hours of training, stuff like that. Is this a train-the-trainer type of thing where they're going to share their skills, or is it something we have to select a few teachers every single year to go through this?
Yeah, so I would equate it to a college course in the science of reading. And so it's a fairly intensive process to dig into the materials and to... After every single lesson and unit, there's assessments, formative assessments that teachers take to see, you know, whether they understand the material and so on. In terms of the final implementation, I don't know that this is something that every single teacher would go through, so it might look more like a train-the-trainer. So as we're looking at who is participating, certainly instructional coaches will be part of that so that they can infuse what they've learned into their conversations with staff. Interventionists can certainly participate in that. Teachers who are thinking about becoming an instructional coach would certainly be a good candidate for this, as well as teachers who are just really interested and want to take a leadership form in some way with literacy.
So I mean, how is this, I mean, this program, if we're doing the instructional coaches and stuff, what are we expecting to come out of this type of training? I mean, how are we going to get that to the teachers that are teaching the students?
Yeah, so like I said, I think the instructional coach model is certainly a piece to certainly highlight. So we have the staff in every building to help facilitate that. In terms of a rollout, I think part of it is making sure that we can build that capacity and make sure that we're continuing those conversations. So for instance, when we engage with that Letterland support, Letterland is a structured literacy program. The coaches then are able to come in and assist the teachers, or whoever's had this training, to continue the conversations about why Letterland is important, why it is important to focus on phonics and phonemic awareness in the way that we do, to connect it to some of the brain research. So the first unit in that Letters training talks about how the brain functions with learning language and learning and connecting sounds with the symbols of the sounds and the words.
Thank you.
Yep.
Director Sherman?
I was actually going to ask about this too. I'm assuming that there's a cost to... Is there a reason why it's 15 teachers that we're having this rolled out to first?
Yeah, so there's a couple levels of costs. So there is the actual physical resource and the online training that goes with that, and that's a couple hundred dollars. I don't remember exactly how much that is. But additionally, with the program, we bring in virtually or physically, we're working on some of those details, a presenter, a consultant from Voyager Sopris Learning, who is the vendor. So they facilitate and provide additional conversation and reflection in those pieces. And then it's also recognizing and honoring the work that teachers are putting in and providing the sub-release time for that.
Okay, because it would be during the day then?
Exactly.
So it would be, okay, so there is a cost then?
There is a cost, yeah.
And are you inviting any teachers? Is it purely just to opt-in at this point, or are you looking to make sure all buildings are covered, or is there criteria?
Yep, yep. So as I said, the instructional coaches and interventionists, certainly we see a role for them to facilitate those conversations back in the buildings. But we also want to make sure that, you know, from the classroom teachers who apply, that we have distribution.
And then lastly, I just had the instructional coaches. I know we've talked about this a couple times. They were cut at the elementary level this year. So I think we're, except for Lake Elmo Elementary due to its size, we're at half FTE in our buildings. How is that going to impact anything like this? Because I was curious, even when you were laying out the training day, you know, how is that going to work if the instructional coaches are halftime? Do they bounce morning is at the school, afternoon training is at the school, and they're able to be at both, or?
Yeah, they have various schedules based on what's going on in the building. In terms of their support with literacy, I think it'd be fair to say their primary focus is supporting those K-2 teachers and implementing Letterland and making sure that we're implementing with fidelity to the program. And I think the Letters piece is in that learning phase, you know, what are the pieces here that we need to bring into our system so that we can support the ongoing conversations down the line as well.
Director Riley?
So the teachers that opt-in to do or get chosen to do the Letters PD, do they have to... Are they committed to doing the other PD as well on top of this, or can they do one or the other?
No. Are you referencing Letterland, the Letterland training or other?
Letters training, which is 40 hours, right?
Yep.
So if they're, you know, very intensive training, so that is on top of the other district-required PD that they have to do.
Correct, yep.
So there's not really a benefit for them really to do both, right? I mean, as far as schedule-wise, you have to do it all, or?
It is an opt-in to this Letters training, which is, as you said, it's 40 hours of learning outside of the day. It's outside of their contract day. And I will say, we put out the survey, I think yesterday or two days ago, and we have a lot of interest.
So that's my other concern as well, is that I'm concerned that without there being an actual plan, a rollout plan, or a plan that's put forth with fidelity, that it's going to become inequitable in the classroom, and you're going to have some teachers that really thrive and students who do really well, and then you'll have some that struggle a little bit more. So that is a concern I have. I would like to see more of a commitment versus a random teacher here and there.
I fully agree with you, and I think we will know more after November 2nd with what we can and cannot do. This is a start. This is greatly needed for our students. It comes at a cost, and we need the resources, and we need the budget to do this. But this is a start, and we are very much so hoping to grow this and have consistency with fidelity across the district.
Director Hockert?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make one more clarification on the difference between Letters and Letterland. They sound a lot alike. Letterland is tied to our curriculum, so that is something that all teachers need to be versed in and be able to deliver with fidelity. So that is a requirement that won't go away. Letters is more of a philosophical course. At times it's been touted as the level of instruction that a reading specialist would receive. So that's above and beyond what a traditional elementary teacher would receive in their understanding and teaching of literacy skills. It's really at that above, above-the-power level. It's not specifically tied to our curriculum.
Correct, and it helps teachers learn to waver through poor curriculum, right? If you have curriculum that isn't so great, it helps teachers to identify what is good and not so good in that curriculum.
I think the part that we really appreciate about Letters is it's really into the science of reading, and it provides a lot of in-depth instruction. So we're excited to be able to be able to offer this to a portion of our teachers, and as Superintendent Landsfeld just shared, we would like to expand that, and we'll have to see as our funding decisions are made, where we go from here.
I would say it's in addition to. It supports reading. It supports the learning of reading with what we are already doing. Also, I would, it would be fun to sometimes make some videos or have people see the classes that are implementing Letterland. It's a joyous time in a classroom, and how they learn and how they're engaged, it's pretty amazing to see. It's a fun time with reading.
Director Hockert?
Thank you. Kind of shifting gears a little bit. I'm curious, I appreciate seeing this very extensive PD list of what's going to be happening on November 2nd. Will there be any room in this or during this day to kind of allow teachers to connect and reflect a little bit about what they're not seeing with kids being back in the classrooms after a year and a half of pandemic learning? I'm kind of curious if that's built in, or if it isn't, if that is something that we could maybe move forward, allow teachers to have colleague time to talk about what they are learning and maybe give some feedback as to what new needs are emerging after distance learning last year.
Yeah, so I would say with specifics to the structure and schedule of the day, we didn't necessarily build in specific, this is a grade-one time for collaboration. I will say, though, looking at the schedule, there's plenty of time within it that is not structured. So there's time at the building level for teachers to get together and to talk through some of those things, specifically at the elementary. At the secondary level, they do have more time built in based on departments to come together and talk about relationships with students and, you know, connections and some of those pieces. Elementary, like I said, it is very much more focused on the literacy initiatives that we need to manage, but there is time available within the day to do that.
Is there an expectation to bring that learning back to the higher levels of the district so that we can kind of hear what's going on on the ground and what they're seeing and kind of reflect on the bigger picture of PD and make adjustments if needed, or is that piece not quite in there yet?
Now, which piece was that?
I'm thinking like, once the teachers have had an opportunity to talk amongst themselves on November 2nd or during any PD, is there an expectation or some way to gather those learnings as a district and kind of learn from the higher levels of kind of what patterns we're starting to see, basically data gathering on what learning loss is occurring?
Well, we usually do surveys at the end of our PD days, but at least at the elementary level, they meet usually weekly with their professional learning communities. So they're working together, looking at student data during those times, and then there's usually scheduled MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support meetings, where you'll have a student advocate in there, you'll have other support staff, the instructional coach, where they look at the data and they look at the entire child. It's not just academic. They can look at any social-emotional concerns that students might have too.
Additionally, I would say principals will be meeting with their leadership teams to talk about some of those pieces. We'll bring our district-wide professional development team together as well to reflect on the day, what was learned, what are some areas that we need to adjust on those remaining professional development days as well.
Great, thank you.
Director Porveni?
Thank you, Chair Petrie. Thank you, Dr. Booth. Appreciate that. Just a quick clarification here. Are we talking about Letters, or we're talking about Letterland?
Both.
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 Okay.
Yep. Letters, however, is not part of the November 2nd training. That's separate. So the times when we bring those teachers together, that will be outside of our professional development district days.
Okay. So I know Director Sherman had asked what the cost was. Did we get an answer to that, what the cost would be for Letters? What is the cost for that particular training? Do we know what the cost is?
We do know that cost. We can provide that. I don't know if we can quote the dollar amount right now.
I don't have all of the different components added up right now.
Added up, but essentially, it is the teacher's time. They have about 40 hours of personal independent learning that they do, reading and individual assessments. And then they come together to do their debrief and deeper dive with the consultants, and also Caleb and Karen are also going to be involved in that. And so that's how many times a year, I'm sorry, Caleb.
Four meetings. The last one will be after school, so that won't be a sub-day, but we will pay teachers for that time.
Yep.
And a concern we do have is finding subs this year. All districts are having difficulty with that. We did add more permanent subs to our list of subs that we can call in. Some school districts have canceled all PD this year that require subs because we are in such a shortage. So that is, that might be a roadblock, but we're going to try.
So thank you for that. I have a question, and I also have a concern. My question is, what is your expected outcome? I understand that there's, you know, research and really understanding is more of a cognitive ability with respect to how teachers apply some of the reading and being able to understand how students react. I understand that part, but what exactly are you... What's your aim? What are you trying to achieve? I agree with Director Riley. If there is no consistent plan in terms of what we call a line of sight and what you expect the outcome to be, then we're just sending people out for training. It's just normal professional development. But in this case, because we want to have an impact, we want to be able to see results, we want to be able to see changes, it's important that we have a plan. It's important that, because that plan should have what we call what our goals are, what those expectations are, and what those outcomes will be. The outcome is really what we're interested in. You can send anyone and everyone to training, but if they have no plan in terms of how, what your expectations of them are, and what your expectations in terms of what that impact will be, then it's a waste of money. It's a waste of money. So the assumption that we're going to have 15, I don't know how the 15 was selected, and if people are interested to be a part of it, in this case, knowing fully well in terms of how it's been explained, I think we have to be really intentional because we want to see results, you know? So for me, I agree with Director results. You know, so for me, I agree with Director Riley in this case, that if there's no plan, that we're, it's going to be inconsistent. So you're just sending people out to do trainings. They come back, there's really no process of implementation. It's just, all right, you went for this training, okay, you do this. Coming from my personal training, if you send someone out, if you pay a dollar on someone, you expect seventy cents in return. If you don't have a plan, you get nothing. So I would really like to see, like she said, that we have something in place. I understand we have to do something, but when it comes to knowledge, when it comes to professional development, doing something is not enough because you want that knowledge to be seen. You want to see an outcome in the classroom. And if we're just looking at research and how teachers learn in terms of identifying or being able to have that cognitive development as to how to implement those kinds of processes, then we're not talking about how it will benefit the children. So what is our expectation?
Yep. Well, and that is exactly why we're starting with our instructional coaches, with the job-embedded PD, so that they can follow up with teachers. That's why we're starting with our interventionists. They're working with our highest needs students with literacy. So they have that impact, which they track the data. And then that's why Q Comp is going to be so important to continue to grow this as well.
I just want to answer your, your direct question. What is the goal? The goal is to build our capacity to be reading experts. We need to improve the literacy scores in this district. We need to improve the literacy of, of our, our students. And so we are starting, and you can call it a pilot if you want, if you think about it that way, but we are starting with a core group of individuals who can lead us forward in this work. As you've heard me say already, letters is not letter land. It's not our curriculum. I think Director Riley is the one who said that actually it, it could help if we had poor curriculum, overcome some of those things. I don't believe we have poor curriculum in place. We're actually pretty fairly new into our literacy adoption. But having reading experts, having literacy experts in our system builds our internal capacity to help us review and ensure that we have the best instructional strategies, as well as the best curriculum and resources for our kids.
So we say it here, do we have it on paper? In terms of what the plan is, what the goal and the outcomes will be? Do we have it all planned out? The reason I ask, and you, you know this, you know this as well, if we don't have something on paper, then it's just training. But we want to be able to see results. We want to be able to see, building the competencies and the skills, skill sets of our teachers, giving them that creativity, that opportunity to be able to apply the knowledge they've learned. Where is that process? Let them develop what the outcome will be. You know what the goals are. You know what those expectations are. So if they go to that training, what are you bringing back? What do you, what do you hope to see that they implement? I think that's important, because that way then they know they have, there's an expectation here. We're not just training you for training's sake. We're training you because we expect you to, to do something. So if you look at it that way, then you know you have a group of fifteen teachers that will work together to help develop a plan as to what the implementation process will look like and what the outcome is intended to be. Then your responsibility will be to work with these teachers to make sure those outcomes are what you want it to be as well. So they have to get it right.
And, and those are part of the stated expectations in the application, that they are agreeing to ongoing conversations, ongoing leadership in these areas, to take that information that they're using, to share it with their buildings, to work with the professional development committee and the instructional coaches, to design the systems that we need to make sure that staff have ongoing opportunities to continue refining and reflecting on their literacy practices in their classrooms. That is certainly part of the process.
Do they know that they can work together before they leave? Do they know they can work together when they come back to develop what their outcomes will be based on their learnings? It's there on paper. You are, you know, expected to do this. You're expected to do, yeah, fine. I know I'm expected to do it. But what if there's nothing really for me to do? Then I'm not going to do anything. So that's where the plan is missing. If they can work as a group, you send fifteen teachers to learn something completely different from what others, especially the other part of it. They come back, the intention is for them to also provide a training of trainers. But they, fifteen of them should be able to build something that you, all of us should be able to see results in the kids, and also in the other teachers. So that's, that's where you get your, we'll call it rate of returns. You see your money's worth. For what you've spent, you're able to get seventy cents back on every dollar.
Director Riley.
I, thank you for that. You said that very well. I, I would like to see a commitment, a solid plan, a solid rollout. Is this starting with certain grade levels? Are you going to start with the younger grade levels? Are you going to have middle school kids or teachers? Or where is your focus going to be at that? And then I have one more follow-up after.
Yeah. So in terms of identifying the teachers for that, that work, I think the, the grade levels that are most impacted by phonics and phonemic awareness development, the foundational reading skills, certainly are K-2 teachers. That doesn't mean the need doesn't exist at three, five, but that is the primary work of, of foundational literacy. And so looking to K-2 to lead this charge within this, this first year.
Okay. I would, really, I would love to see an actual plan. If you could write one up for the board members, that would be great. I want to touch on Q Comp because you brought Q Comp into this. We have a couple of things that are brought to us through Q Comp instructional coaches and mentoring. I, you know, the, this board approved, not me, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for Q Comp. They want to levy the district taxpayers for what I have seen in recent emails, I am very concerned about. The goal of that, that money that they want to take from the taxpayers, they want to put into comprehensive unionism. So my issue with this is we have these funds that could actually be used for letters PD and actual literacy. Is there any way, and I'm not sure who out of administration attends these meetings, is it Dr. Cherry? Why is the conversation not on actual literacy and on these other, these other means of professional development? That is money actually coming from the taxpayer? And all the community really wants is to have literate children. And so I'm not sure why the focus of the SCA and the Q Comp board is not helping the district by not putting funds towards letters PD. That's a lot of money. That, that could be very beneficial to this, this staff and this community. So, you know, you brought up Q Comp and, and that, but it, that's not what's in the Q Comp plan here. So I, I'm concerned, and, and I would hope you could bring that back because I'm not allowed at those meetings. There's no board oversight at those meetings. That is all on administration and your, your SCA leadership team. So, or your Q Comp board and our Q Comp rep, which comes out of district salary as well, I believe. Maybe Q Comp salary, which comes out of district funds. So that's my concern. That's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that this board levied, wants to levy in December, this community. That money, in my opinion, should not be going to programs like social justice, industrial, professional development, bargaining job security, following the, the, you know, national teachers' union. Instead, we should be doing things that focus on our own community. And literacy, I believe, is our main issue in our community.
Yes.
Just a response to that. We do plan to bring a report and a proposal to the board at an upcoming work session to make sure that the board understands what the district would do with the additional Q Comp, non-voter-approved levy dollars. So, and...
I have it in emails that were collected, so that's my concern. It's actual emails that were, that were, you know, from that committee. And so that's, I just wish, I hope you would bring that back. And I'm sure some of them are here or watching. That I would really, as a board member, want to see that money put towards a literacy program.
Director Sherman.
Just so, I'm, I'm going back into my Q Comp. When we did that a few months ago, I just want to clarify that for the public, that it's just out there as something we can do. And the direction to the Q Comp board was to come back with a plan on how you would, how the Q Comp board would utilize those funds. And we mentioned specifically targeting literacy and making it a measurable plan, that we wanted to see it be a measurable plan. So I just want to put that out there. No decisions have been made. I haven't attended any meetings. I don't, I'm waiting to see the plan. So I just think we should wait to see the plan, in my opinion, and make the decision at that time. My question is on, I had heard a lot with job-embedded, the job-embedded PD, and specifically, I think, PLC. I had heard from a lot of teachers that during the pandemic, they really benefited from, you know, collaborating with teachers, first grade teachers in other buildings, and that they didn't really, that was kind of the first time they'd been able to do that in a while, and they had missed that. It was something we used to do, and maybe Superintendent, you might remember that. And then we went away from it, and they really enjoyed that time. Are we doing anything like that within this plan that would revisit that, or has that been looked at?
Well, we have renewed our Zoom accounts. And before, we didn't have access to Zoom. It was a couple, it was a few years before, when we would have sister schools and meet on PD days and, and spend that time together. And so that's something that we could look at, because I've heard the same thing as you, that teachers found it very valuable to be able to collaborate with each other.
I would add, both middle schools have made that commitment to, to do a lot of professional development in common, and bringing those, their professional learning communities into alignment with each other.
Yeah, the middle schools have been doing a lot together this year.
And I thought that the way you laid out this PD day was really easy to understand, so I, I really appreciate that. It gives me a nice snapshot. I'm curious, after the PD day, does anything go back to our families? Are they aware of what teachers are doing? Is there ever any communication that goes out where this is how the PD, PD day was spent? I'm just kind of looking at that, you know, kind of 360 communication on what our teachers are doing behind the scenes that might actually be something our families are interested in. And just, I loved this so much how you laid it out, but maybe as we get closer to the January 17th and April 15th, I just find it very helpful. And I'm impressed, because I know your budgets have been cut by a lot. And so I'm impressed with how much you have been able to do right here, so.
Director Keister.
I will just jump in. Yes, we have, in the past, usually in a newsletter, just shared with our families what teachers have been working on. We don't usually get into a lot of detail, but give them just a little overview of what our teachers are working on and what the focus is of a PD day.
Okay.
I know we've talked a lot about elementary PD, but I was just wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about some of the PD that happens in the high school and the ALC. Understanding student stories, what, what sort of PD does that entail?
So I've been more, I will say, I've been more involved in collecting the, the elementary and building the professional development for elementaries. The high school, ALC, and middle schools have been designing their professional development days. So understanding student stories is, is recognizing how students come to school, the stories that they bring with them, whether it's a personal background, family structures, who they are. And it's, it's, it's part of, of building that relationships with students, understanding, you know, how to, how to get to know students on, on a, on a personal level, to understand where they're coming from, what's important to them, and, and so on. I don't know, I, I think they're still designing the actual conversations of what that's going to look like. But from my conversations, that's what I've gathered.
Okay. Thank you. Director Pobeni.
Thank you, Chair Petrie. I just want to say a few things. We've been hearing a lot of great stories about our school district with the GATE program, with our kids in a national honors program, college board programs. So there's been a lot of great things out there in terms of our school district, what we've been able to achieve. So it shows that our teachers and administrators are doing something right. I just want to make that clear, and I think it's something we really need to be really, really proud of, as parents, teachers, staff in this community. I just want to say this, that I support what you're doing. I really like what you're doing. I'm just so ingrained in making sure there's a plan. But I really want to make it clear that I'm, I'm thankful for what you've been able to put together. And so I really support that. So with this, and I am a strong believer of professional development, very strong believer of professional development. So we're on the right path. And the matter of fact, that you even included the letters program as part of what we'll do. I know money is, has always been an issue there. And, but that's the reason why we're asking the community to continue to support, because there are great programs out there, things that have been identified for us to be able to continue to use to support our kids. We've got great teachers here, and I think it's important that we recognize that. So thanks to all of you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, thank you very much for that presentation. We look forward to hearing more after November 2nd, because I imagine that depending on what happens then, we will be able to go forward with more professional development, I hope. So thank you very much for that. All right, we're going to move on now. The next item on our agenda is open forum. Those who wish to speak to the school board will be able to do so during open forum. You must sign up to speak. You may sign up only for yourself, not other individuals or groups. Sign up will be available electronically the week of a board meeting, beginning at 8:00 AM on Monday, and normally closing at 4:00 PM on Wednesday. You will receive a notification upon submitting your online form. Due to time limitations, we will limit the number of speakers to fifteen, who may speak for three minutes each. If you spoke at the last meeting, you may sign up to speak this week, but your name will be placed on a waitlist. If speaking slots remain after the signup time ends, names from the waitlist will be added to the speaking list in order of the time that individuals signed up. You will be notified if you are scheduled to speak. When your name is called, please be seated at the board table, in that spot right over there, next to Dr. Cherry, and state your name and address, including town, before you begin your remarks. Please pay attention to the timer. Oh, do you have the? Did I put it in here and forgot to give them to you? Here we go. Please pay attention to the timer, who will hold up cards indicating when you are approaching the end of your time. When time is called, you may finish your sentence. After you address the board, please leave the table. Stillwater Area Public Schools District 834 welcomes input from citizens as community involvement on the issues facing our district fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised, and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. We welcome discussion of the issues, but will not tolerate the targeting of individual staff or students by name, position, or implication. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, or malice will not be tolerated. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. Our first speaker tonight is Pete Kelzenberg.
Hi. Pete Kelzenberg, 22nd Street in Afton. Good evening, Chair Petrie, members of the board, and Superintendent Landsfeld. I would like to thank you for your efforts in making our district as good as it can be in spite of obstacles that have tested us recently. And I hope to be joining you in a couple of weeks, and I'm imagining what it might be like. The community will be looking for leadership as we debate topics important to our district. Parents and students will be watching. Others will be looking for me to make mistakes, then celebrating those mistakes. What has me more concerned, though, is the thought of the levy not being approved. I imagine the emails that I'll get, the calls that I'll receive from residents, and wonder how will I respond to those. "I know you have to make big cuts, but please don't cut my child's adaptive sports program." How am I going to answer that? "I know you have to make cuts, but please don't cut the paraprofessionals who help my child participate in class." "I know you have to cut, but please figure out a way to keep my class sizes reasonable so my child can get a fair amount of attention from their teachers." Please keep the specialists... "Please keep the specialist who keeps my child, who helps my child deal with personal struggles so he doesn't fall behind." "Please don't cut the art and technology programs that are inspiring my kids to dream about their future." "Please don't cut the athletic programs that my child is interested in and makes them interested in fitness and well-being." "Thanks for taking the time to read my email, but can you assure me that my information is secure? Will you still have enough funds to reinstate my bus service that was canceled recently? My child really loves his teacher. Can you figure out a way to keep her from being laid off? Don't cut gate, don't cut dual immersion. My mother loves to watch her grandchildren's concerts. Please don't let that end. She also enjoyed community ed classes before COVID shut that down. Please make sure those come back. And please do not raise the fees for the athletic associations to use the district facilities." Anyway, you get the point. I hope that we can avoid these unnecessary conversations and instead focus on making Stillwater Area Public Schools the best district in Minnesota. This community deserves good education funding and will allow us to continue high-quality programming, staffing, and services. We need yes votes for both levy questions. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for having me here tonight. It's fun to be at a board meeting in a different building for me. My name is Natasha Fleishman. I live at 1318 Carnelian Street in Stillwater. And I'm here because 20 years ago, we bought a house in this district because of the reputation of the schools. That was the whole reason we started looking in Stillwater and that's why we came. We had two boys who went all the way through from early childhood family education up through the high school. And there was such a vast array of options for them to experience here that allowed them to explore their interests, things like fourth grade plays, tech programs, and 3D printers. Then we had AP courses, orchestra, robotics, a state championship team that my son was on. Okay. The science bowl and math team. One of my kids went on to Montana State studying math and the other is now a sergeant in the United States Marine Corps stationed in Japan. My children gained so much from this district and I'm voting yes on both questions so that the children who are just getting started will continue to have the same array or similar array of options to feed their interests and set them on their paths to the future.
Good evening. To the school board chair and members and superintendent and the administrators of ISDA 34, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wish to begin my time in front of you with a message of deep gratitude for the professionals of this school district, from educators in the classrooms to the staff in the buildings, to administrators who help guide the strategic direction of this school district, to the bus drivers who safely transport our students to and from school. There are not the perfect words to communicate the breadth and depth of this gratitude, but thank you is a decent start. When we first entered the school system, I sort of knew what to expect since my husband also works in public education for another district. Those expectations were quickly blown away by the deep love, tender care, and fierce commitment shown in every interaction we've shared in this district. Now, there have been plenty of changes in this education community over the years. I think back to when we first shook hands in the Early Childhood and Family Center with that instructor who oversaw the pre-screening for kindergarten. That feels like it was a lifetime ago. But what has not changed from our experiences as parents is that deep love, that tender care, that fierce commitment. What also did not change was that an operating levy, the one that's set to expire at the end of this year, it's been there throughout our children's academic careers here. When I think back on our experiences and what's contributed to them, there are two clear answers. Strong schools, strong community. As proud parents in this community, we don't just want our kids to do well. We want every kid in this district to do well. When we recognized that same philosophy was alive and well throughout this school district, we felt pony pride. Pony pride, I've come to realize, describes the feeling I get whenever I meet or work with alongside one of the many excellent teachers in this district. And pony pride's also what I feel every time one of my children's faces lights up with excitement as they describe something new that they've learned or mastered. Pony pride is why I'm voting yes and yes on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Can you please state your name and address? Just state your name and address.
Sarah Voight and I'm on Manning Avenue in West Lakeland Township.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tracy Mackey and I live on the North Hill in Stillwater near Stonebridge Elementary, where my two sons started their learning journeys and first experienced the investment and commitment of the district. And they began to understand what community meant. My older son Evan is in his third year at the University of Denver. After a nurturing beginning at Stonebridge, Evan transferred to the Amazing Gate Program. If there were no option for gifted students, we would have moved him outside this district. We were all thrilled he could stay here. His school community was robust and it was awesome. Advanced classes, mountain biking, ultimate frisbee, Nordic skiing, jazz band, wind symphony, so many engaged people, so many meaningful intersections in school and in the broader community. I think about the backdrop of the Bayport Cemetery from Memorial Days. Mr. Lindsay expected band students to be present and perform for the community. He said it was one of the most important things they would do in his class. Evan worked hard, took AP classes, was a leader in band, a three-sport captain, and a graduate with highest honors. The education and coaching he received here positioned him so well for his what next. Oftentimes, we downplay the smart kids. They'll be fine, it will work out. What works is that he was invested in. Thank you for creating a path for him to succeed. He's currently studying at the University of Glasgow and learning to play the bagpipes. My youngest son Leo is a 10th grader. He had an IEP, has had an IEP since first grade and also fantastic experiences at Stonebridge. With the shift to sixth grade middle schools, we moved him to River Grove. As a kid with sensory issues, he needed one more year of maturity before engaging in larger schools. Principal Van Scoy reached out to say he was sorry to hear we were leaving and is there anything he could do? Leo was back for seventh and eighth grade, played percussion, joined Nordic skiing, and continues to progress. Before ninth grade, we had an email from Dennis Lindsay and Joel Bryan. Notice that Leo's not registered for band. Would like to highlight the benefits and ask you to reconsider. I said Leo's a neurodiverse learner and he really struggles, though he loves music. Mr. Lindsay responded, "Over the years, I've connected with many students of different abilities. Please know we would love to work with Leo if he wants to give it a try." Leo's not done here yet and I thank you for supporting what he's experienced and what's to come. I know some want to hold the district accountable for what they see as disappointing performance. I get that, nothing is flawless. Yet two things can be true at the same time. You can seek change and then collaborate for that change without cutting core funding. Do we want more stability or less? I want more. If we don't have strong schools, their decline will trigger a cascade of negative impacts. Nothing is isolated. My singular vote does not stand alone. Like our community, it is closely connected. My vote will ripple across millions of learning moments for more than 8,000 students with needs and challenges, talented potential, and I am investing in them by voting yes. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jack Hoy from 1034 Pioneer Trail in Bayport. And firstly, I'd like to thank the school board for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a senior at the high school and I just turned 18 on October 13th and I am planning to vote yes for my first election on November 2nd in support of the levy. The Stillwater District has made me who I am today. I've been in the Stillwater District since kindergarten, attending Anderson, then Oakland, and now at the high school. I've been a link leader for two years. I'm active in the community. I've worked at Nelson's for four years and just got my second job at the Stillwater Boat Club on the Gas Dock. I play baseball and I'm a captain on the ski team. Next year, I plan to attend the University of North Dakota and become a pilot. The reason I'm talking today is because I want to do my part to ensure that the students coming in behind me have the same opportunities that I've had. The Stillwater District set me up for success, whether it's through leadership opportunities like link or attending events to cheer on my classmates. I would hate to see any programming cuts take away from the learning experiences in addition to technology needs. The levy addresses that secondary sports and activities could be at risk. I've been on the ski team since seventh grade and realized it's a level two sport that takes tons of funding and logistics. Skiing has brought me some of my best friends and memories in high school and I would hate to see that go. And not to mention that we have continued to be one of the best teams in the state every year. Many other opportunities exist that mean a lot to kids participating, but it'll be easy to stop the funding if voting yes is not the priority. In the end, voting yes for the levy is the only responsible way to go to ensure the same fun, beneficial, and impactful school experience that I have had and the future of our generation needs. Thank you and go ponies.
Hi, thanks for having me and thank you for all that you all do. I know it's a lot of work being on a board. My name is Erica Astreik. I'm at 913 Broadway Street North in Stillwater. I have lived in our school district for over 27 years. My three adult children attended and graduated from Stillwater Public Schools and with my youngest just graduating in 2019. I am a strong supporter of public education. I really do believe it is our greatest equalizer in society, creating equal opportunities for all people. The importance of passing the levy at this time is critical. We must look to the future and continue to fund our schools to keep up with the times, supporting students, educators, programs, and technology. Question one is a no-brainer. We absolutely need to maintain funding for the district. The $12 million in cuts will occur if not passed. This is a substantial sum. The necessary cuts will likely affect class sizes, sports, arts, and other important programs. The cost for question one is minimal to taxpayers. It really is a no-brainer. Question two is a key for success. My children were fortunate. They didn't have to worry about having a laptop to do their schoolwork and connect with resources, teachers, and classmates. But families who can't afford those devices for their kids are at a major disadvantage and should have access to the same opportunities. The district must have the funds to update their outdated and broken devices so that all children in our public schools have access to the benefits afforded by technology. Devices for students are only part of what's needed, though. Teachers should have good enough devices that they can properly do their jobs. And our tech infrastructure and security systems need to be maintained and updated. It's my understanding that we've never had a tech levy in our district and this is surprising considering how much we all rely on technology to live our lives. Do you know of any successful organization today that doesn't use tech and have a line item to fund it? A funding bucket for tech should already be in place. Let's catch up with the many other local school districts who already designate funds specifically for technology. When I see the data on other area school districts and what they spend per student, I'm really surprised that Stillwater schools spends less than average, even though our academics are top-notch with test scores to support that. I'm also really surprised that our taxpayers spend 59% less than South Washington County taxpayers for their public schools and 55% less than Monta Meade and White Bear Lake taxpayers. Now is the time to move in the direction of catching up to support our kids. I'll close by saying that I really don't understand the vote no people and their rationale. They will be punishing children for the decisions made by adults and strapping our district. It doesn't seem logical to me. How is the district supposed to do more with less? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Super and I live on the South Hill in Stillwater. Thank you all for having me here tonight and allowing me to, this opportunity to speak. First, I want to start by saying that I voted for every one of the elected board members sitting before us today. I also voted for the previous board majority and I think it's worth asking, what does everyone think that board would be doing right now in terms of the levy? I do not believe for one second that they would be acting so irresponsibly and grandstanding by pushing a narrative to defund our children's education on some notion of tough love. I just don't buy it. They would absolutely have to approve a renewal of the existing operating levy and I believe Director Riley knows this too. It's pretty easy to be the lone vote against this levy as a way to pander to a base that doesn't truly understand the implications of not passing it. I did vote for you and I'm disappointed that you are using this platform to push this agenda to defund education. And I know for a fact that there are many in this community who feel the same way. It is unconscionable and frankly, I don't see how your work against the levy does not violate board policy that states a board member cannot work against an approved board agenda item. But I am here tonight on a more positive, want to speak on a more positive note to offer my perspective as both a resident and a real estate professional in our district. In my experience as a Realtor, I'm often asked about schools regardless of where I am showing houses. Stillwater School District is an area that has stood out as a place that many people consider a top pick for many reasons. The river, the surrounding lakes, the farms, the forests, along with the quaint historic town are without a doubt a large part of the appeal. But we also are considered a top school district as well. It is easy to speak with pride to my clients about the community and direct them to resources that show what it means to have pony pride. I love being able to share stories about people who graduated from our schools and have gone on to do so many amazing things. Athletes, actors, business entrepreneurs, scientists, musicians, and on and on. One of my favorite highlights to share is our amazing theater program and the music department in the high school. We have a top-notch theater at our high school and the improvements that were made there recently make it such a great resource for students to pursue performing arts. I'm still in awe of the incredible performance of Les Miserables at the theater department in the high school a few years ago. It was simply breathtaking and it was especially impressive with the live orchestra pit beneath the stage. This was an opportunity, this is an opportunity my daughter will soon get to experience This was an opportunity, this is an opportunity my daughter will soon get to experience as she's been invited to play in the pit for spring performances. She's now also playing softball and experiencing what it means to be a pony athlete. Having access to the pack with strength training and an athletic trainer and physical therapist onsite is a critical part of that experience. Not all schools can boast of such things. I'm not even halfway through. I have so much I want to say. Just vote no is not an option. Voting no is not demanding better. Voting no is choosing failure. Please vote yes to renew the existing operating levy and vote yes for the technology levy. Thank you.
George Hepner. George Hepner.
George Hepner, Paris Avenue, Oak Park Heights. Board members, Superintendent Lansfeld. Anytime a levy's on the ballot, it's important that voters know its purpose. The upcoming levy questions have nothing to do with school expansion, the selling of real estate, or the closing of buildings. They do, however, have much to do with the learning of the 8,500 students from early childhood through the Adult Transitions Program. At the elementary level, your levy votes will impact the offerings in the areas of music, art, and physical education. They will impact the positions of school interventionists who work with our most needy students in reading and math. They will impact the summer programming, which has helped students remediate for over 20 years. If you are a parent or a grandparent of an elementary student, voting yes will allow these valuable programs to continue without disruption. At the middle school level, elective programs are often the classes that keep students most interested in school. Rural languages, band or choir or orchestra, public speaking, design and make or avid are electives that encourage students to follow their passion. Access to technology through a dedicated funding levy will allow students to stay connected to their teachers. If you are a parent or a grandparent of a middle school student, voting yes will allow teacher-student collaborations at a time students often struggle on their path to academic success. At the high school level, innovative programming like Career Pathways and BAR helps students reach their achievement goals. Beyond the classroom, these opportunities, thanks to previous community support, include, among others, yearbook and journalism, robotics, and FFA Drama Club and the debate team. These activities plus strong music and athletic programs allow students to take part in school-sponsored events that bring both community and personal pride. If you are a parent or a grandparent of a high school student, voting yes will allow these opportunities to continue for another decade of District 834 students. Perhaps you are a community member who has children who were educated in District 834 schools and believe in the idea of paying it forward. Perhaps you've recently moved to District 834 and are just learning about our schools and their opportunities and want those same opportunities for your children. Or perhaps you're a district parent who has a student in one of the other fine schools in the district, but realize that strong public schools help create vibrant communities and raise property values for everyone. If you vote yes for the levies, not only are you supporting reading, writing, and math, but you are supporting outstanding programs available for our youngest learners in early childhood to our transitions programs for 18- to 21-year-olds. Please join me in voting yes.
Bob Manning. Bob Manning.
We're not both named Bob Manning. I'm Bob Manning. I live on Legend Boulevard in Stillwater.
And I'm Rachel Stile. I live on 3rd Street in Lake Elmo.
We're here to talk about some of the good things, the many good things happening in our district. I've lived in Stillwater for 22 years, taught here for 27, coached for 15, raised three sons who went through the Stillwater School System. Now, as a Career Pathways Coordinator at the high school, my job is to connect students to local businesses through real-world experiences that build relevant skills and help address the labor and skill shortages that every industry is experiencing.
I'm also one of our Career Pathways Coordinators at the high school. I've taught in Stillwater for 22 years, and my children have been fortunate to go through the Stillwater Schools as well. One of my passions as a Career Pathways Coordinator is to help expand academic offerings for all of our students and provide and expand our early credit opportunities, college credit opportunities for all of our kids. Last week, our freshmen took a survey as part of our game day experience, and 45% of our freshmen said that they're already starting to think about their future. Meanwhile, many of our juniors and seniors are feeling stressed out because they don't know where to go or how to even begin. Our goal is with Pathways is to help students feel ready to launch upon graduation from high school.
Pathways is not a program that students have to join. It's a framework upon which we provide all students with a meaningful education. Students can engage with Pathways programming no matter where they are in their journey. And as our new initiative takes hold, all students will have gone through the following stages. Starting freshman and sophomore year, students will begin to discover their interests and strengths and chart their course using the personalized learning plan and have access to over 40 early college credit opportunities. They will also begin to explore a variety of careers through facility tours, guest speakers, career conversations with professionals in their field of interest. Leveraging our partnerships with local businesses and community organizations will provide real-world experiences through class projects, internships, and even paid work experiences. By their junior and senior year, having charted a course for success, explored their interests, maybe even changed paths along the way, kids are ready to pursue a meaningful path upon graduation.
Over the course of the last month, we've been very busy down in the Pathways office. While our sophomores and juniors took the pre-ACT and PSAT last week, we provided an experience for our juniors and seniors called Game Day, which gave students a chance to think about their game plan after high school. We had over 222 students travel to seven different schools around the metro area. We also had 123 students participate in virtual tours, while 10 of our students met with military representatives. Thank you for the opportunity to provide Pathways funding for all of our kids.
Jo Samuelson.
I'm Jo Samuelson, 1019 North 2nd Street, Stillwater. Following that, maybe I'll sign up for Pathways. The school board is here to set policy and hire those who make schools work for any child. All of us speak at public meetings are not so much speaking to the board, but to a larger public we want to influence. On September 24th, I came to the school board meeting intending to talk about civility. Before I could speak, the meeting was adjourned because of disruption. It's a bit ironic. During this meeting and the next, many focus on demanding better. Who doesn't want that? The arguments were, number one, third-grade reading scores have dropped significantly. Number two, teachers, some teachers assign but don't give credit for homework. One-room schoolhouse used to be good enough. The teachers' union endorsed candidates and concepts that may be disagreeable. 70% of the taxpayers don't have children in the schools. Following the meeting on the 24th, I listened to an impassioned vote no parent question whether teachers live in the district. Yesterday, my wife received a postcard with a caption, as Marvin Gaye said, "Save the babies." It actually said, "Vote no on both levy questions, rescue the children." I'm unsure how that would work. The first levy is to maintain what students now have, and the second is to fund technology. Though Stillwater Schools are one of the few metro districts without a separate technology levy, I think the district could more clearly lay out the increased taxes and how they'll be spent on technology. Technology is important and expensive, but it requires a plan we haven't seen. But I have the feeling that much of the vote no sentiment dates to 2016, when the board voted to close schools and open another. I understand the desire to want the best for your kid, and the drop in reading level scores is a concern. But how will you raise the scores by spending less on next year's third graders? A group that has experienced significant turmoil during COVID-19. About homework? I wish the school administration had a vision of teaching that relied less on jargon and more, put more emphasis on allowing a variety of teaching techniques, but I'm not on the board, and I have to accept that I vote for those who will make the best decision for students. My father went to a one-room schoolhouse in rural Iowa. I think he would say it was only the beginning. And how many one-room schoolhouses would it take for every District 834 student? The teachers' union endorses some candidates for a variety of offices. It is only that an endorsement. It doesn't direct Teachers Retirement Association investments for for-profit prisons, but I find that if I find that be the case, I'll do everything in my power to have them the best. And yes, 70% of the homeowners don't have children in schools. But I know that that's it. Please vote yes on both levies.
Diane Palasic.
I want to thank Board Chair Petrie and Directors and Superintendent Lansfeld for the opportunity to speak. My name is Diane Palasic, and I live in Stillwater Township. We all demand better success for our students. Yet, the vote no group has done repeatedly, has used repeatedly a percentage, and from a Minnesota COMP assessment score that 57% of our third graders are not meeting reading proficiency. Educators explain this best, and I learned it from them. You do not use one test measure alone. It doesn't ever tell the whole story. But it does remind me of a nursery tale where Henny Penny saw one object fall from the sky, and she convinced her friends the sky was falling, and they must rush and tell the king. She reacted to one data point. But back to the 57%. The MCA scores were related to changes the state made. In 2013, a decline was predicted, and it happened statewide because there were significant changes made in the test. The MCA test later switched from manual books to computer tests. How many third graders were used to reading a computer test? In 2018, parents began to question standardized testing and began opting out more students from the test completely. The state at first counted those opt-outs as zeros. It changed the score. Educators look at the whole pictures. Our ESL learners have increased in the district. Our special ed learners have increased to nearly 17% in our district. Dual-language programs are known to impact third-grade reading scores. It's also shown that they catch up. There were no tests in 2020, and 18 months of learning was seriously disrupted by a pandemic, and 2021 scores were impacted. One test alone is simply irresponsible. It's like yelling, "The sky is falling." Demand better success for our students, yes, but look at what our successes are. I think enough people have already talked about them. If you look at the community newsletter, community connections, it talks about them all. Our kids are doing well. Our district is doing well, too. They're providing, they will initiate the letters program, the phonics-based reading program, they're purchasing the Wilson Language Training reading curriculum, they're making moves on improving our reading curriculum. Ask a teacher, ask a board member, but you won't make better readers if you deny the funds to pay for the teachers in the reading curriculum. Yes, demand better schools for our kids by demanding high-quality administration and teachers. Some have complained loudly they're overpaid and the teachers' union is some kind of conspiracy. Well, I'm proud to live in a community where our teachers are highly thought of and paid well for their work. That way, we get quality applicants applying in our district, and I want to be part of a community that supports public schools. There's been a lot of communications from a very local group called the Vote Knowers. The larger community audience has a lot of women grandparents like myself. While we supported their right to free speech, their speech made us not want to listen to their arguments. The explosive outburst put a stop to any two-way conversation. I have just two sentences. It's about jamming together a bunch of scary statements to scare the community that our students are failing. That's not our district's story. That's Henny Penny's story. We wanted to tell you the reaction that I couldn't say at another open forum because it got shut down. As open forum speakers, many of us in the community, they were over 35.
Your time is up.
They chose to respond with the power of the purse.
Time is up.
And you motivated us to continue giving our money, time, and energy to vote yes for District 834. Thank you.
Jeremy Schur.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and the administration for this opportunity. I know this is not a mandated platform, but one that is generously offered because you find the sharing essential to the decision-making in the district. My name is Jeremy Schur. I reside in White Bear Lake. But I've spent the past 20 years working for the district in the custodial department. I am currently serving as the head engineer for Brookview Elementary. I'm the first person who enters the building in the morning. I turn off the alarm, turn on the lights, check the boilers, and make sure the staff and students are entering a safe environment. It's eerily quiet at that point. But soon after the adventure club staff arrive to set up for the morning, bread is delivered, the kitchen staff come and start their prep work for breakfast and lunch. The office staff check messages. Teachers and parists start their morning routines as buses and car poolers bring the students to their waiting learning environment. It is then that the building truly comes alive. It's awesome to witness that. As staff, we all have our individual schedules and job descriptions, but our true value to the students and ultimately the community that surrounds us isn't in our individual checklist. It's how we work together. Collaboration, compromise, grace, empathy, mutual problem-solving. This is how we are able to serve even the most challenging of students. All have the opportunity to thrive here, and as a staff, we model that collaborative ethic to the students. And believe me, students are observant to modeling, as we all know. A considerable portion of my day is spent in the cafeteria. When I see students of different ethnic, religious, socioeconomic, gender, and ability sitting around a table together, it is apparent that they don't see differences as a detriment, but as a benefit. They simply look across the table and see friends. That's what gives me hope. The vitriol, divisiveness, and civility and closed-mindedness that has permeated the broadcast news, social media, and even these board meetings has not penetrated our walls, and it will not penetrate our walls, I assure you. Any investment that the community generously offers will pay off when the students that we have nurtured grow and mature and eventually take our place. It is then that the seeds of compassion that we have sown will replace the divisiveness with unity and true community. It is my hope that the caring, supportive, and loving environment that we are fostering inside our walls will eventually be reflected in the community outside our walls. Thank you.
Bob Hagstrom.
Good evening, all of you. Nice to be here. I'm going to give you a little history lesson. Diane, my wife, is back here with me. We moved out here in 1959, and we had three children. We have, I live in Grant in an old farmhouse. And my first experience with the board or this school was with our oldest son, Jim. He was in kindergarten, and all the buses lined up out there, and he scratched his head. He didn't know which bus to get on. So when all the buses left, he was standing there. Who do you think I met in my driveway? The principal, Mr. Hollander, drove Jim out and said, "Your little boy was standing at the bus and couldn't make it." So my first introduction to this school was meeting Mr. Hollander the first day of school. And I have had nothing but good memories of my children, our children, going to school. Our kids got on buses for 25 years in our neighborhood or in front of our house. 25 years from 1959. Our last graduate was in 1985. They participated in all the programs of the school. The programs included some of the best music, some of the best sporting events, some of the things that have really enhanced their life. They were good students, some above average, some average. But they've gone on to live very successful lives, every one of them. And you know, it's end results that you want from education, isn't it? Are the kids getting results? They get results from good teachers. And Stillwater- And Stillwater 834 has had such a good reputation. They've attracted some of the best teachers in the state. I know that. I know them. I know a lot of the teachers personally, and I've experienced them. I've been a Nordic ski volunteer for... Since our daughter Amy skied in 80... In the late... Mid-'80s. I've been a volunteer with this high school Nordic ski program. I've gotten to know a lot of kids. Just endless numbers of kids who have experienced and show that experience by the way they live and what they do with their lives. Thank you. My time is up. I've enjoyed every minute of it.
Erin Mathis.
Good evening. Erin Mathis, Lake Ullman, also special ed para at Oakland Middle School. Superintendent Lansfeld, Chair Petrie, Board Directors, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. First, I want to thank the administration for settling a very fair contract for the para-union. I also want to put a shout-out to the para staff that dedicated countless hours to come to a fair settlement. There are times outside of the community... In the community when it feels like we're not a valued part of the teaching staff. Let me assure you that without passing the levy, our jobs are at risk, and that ultimately takes away from our students' learning experiences. My home has four voters that are in support of both questions on the upcoming levy. My daughters both received outstanding education from Stillwater Schools, and we look forward to supporting the current and future students of our district as they deserve the same experiences and education that my children had. The Special Education Department is also very near and dear to my heart, and our district is bar none. Being in the classroom every day gives me a unique perspective to see what happens firsthand. Our students are engaged in their learning. The teachers are dedicated to their students and their jobs. Have you ever had the experience of a group of gen ed peers come to a classroom where you are with one or two sped students to pick us up because I don't know... I might not know where to go for Unified Gym? Hmm, in case you don't know what Unified Gym is. It is a regular ed gym class that has students that have made a choice to spend time with their peers of differing abilities. They accept them into the games and interact with them. They also take part with FIAE teachers in organizing the activities that are appropriate for all abilities. What awesome leadership skills these students are learning. It truly fills my heart to watch. Vote yes for all of these students and their families. Having worked on and off with the student since fourth grade, now an eighth... And now, excuse me, now an eighth grader, and seeing the look on her mom's face... Sorry. When we as staff got to tell her that your child is beginning to use her verbal skills. Sorry. The student has spent non-verbal her entire life. Watching that learning take place for the student is priceless. Vote... Please vote yes for her and her family and other families in the district who have children with different abilities. Have you had the opportunity to go into a gen ed classroom and have to rearrange the tables and chairs just to be able to fit into the classroom? Being accepted in by the teachers and peers and students who are moving furniture to help us physically fix the space? Sorry, okay. Anyways, if the levy doesn't pass, then we won't get to experience being in the classroom. For all those reasons, I please vote yes for the levy. Thank you.
Nance Purcell.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I gave it a shot on the 23rd of September and it didn't work. Can you hear me? Is this working? Okay. I live at 1017 Abbott Street West in Stillwater. I retired from District 834 in 2012 after teaching at Stillwater Junior High School and at now Stillwater Area High School for 18 years. During my first 12 years in the district, I taught ninth-grade civics at Stillwater Junior High. And when I moved to the high school, I taught US government to seniors. In both the ninth and 12th grade, students studied the Constitution, different levels of government, rights and responsibilities of citizenship, public policy. However, as seniors, there's a little more depth, of course, to the course. When I was teaching, I'm not sure this is still true, seniors had an assignment to attend a public meeting. Washington County Commissioners, a city council meeting, a local commission, the school board. Their task was to observe, take notes, and write a critique of the meetings they attended. They got a taste of democracy in action. Student write-ups routinely included comments about the slow, often boring meetings. No surprise, although years have been a little livelier. Lo and behold, the work of elected officials wasn't dazzling. The folks we elect to take care of the business of government are willing to give their time and their expertise to sustain democracy and democratic institutions. While most of my students observed well-run, orderly meetings, some witnessed disrespectful outbursts, name-calling, rudeness and impatience, disruptions and interruptions. These disruptions shocked them. My students were surprised that adults could behave so badly. Students wrote about behaviors that are not tolerated in District 834 classrooms. Currently, fear and disruption inflame public meetings and public discourse at all levels of government. Tonight, I'd like to weigh in on behalf of tolerance and trust and forgiveness. Tolerance for this board is in some part short... In short supply because I think you're being held hostage to anger at the decisions of former boards. Trust, again, short supply in our district. Many citizens of this district are angry that promises were broken. I share this anger and disillusionment, but what I would like is heartfelt apology, not to gut the district budget. I'm here on behalf of forgiveness and moving forward. Forgiveness is a fact... An act of creation, and it's time to forgive. Our future must not be predicated on missteps from the past. We go to the polls on November 2nd to vote on two questions that will shape District 834 for years to come. The outcome of this referendum will affect our schools and our property values. We will prevail as a premier school district. We will not prevail if this levy does not pass. I urge you to vote yes on both questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I move that we adjourn to a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3B to discuss or consider offers for the purchase or sale of real properties. The properties are identified as 10158 122nd Street North, Hugo, Minnesota 55038, the former Withrow Elementary School property. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Director Hockert. All those in favor of adjourning to a closed session, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion is unanimous. Thank you.
Check, one, two. Two, two, two. Check, one, two. One, two. One, one, two. One, two. One, two. One, two. One, two. Three, four, five, six. Five, six. Six. Five, six. One, two. Two. Three. Four, five, six. Seven, eight, nine. Number nine. Check, one, two. One, two, check.
Oh, that was quick. All right. So they'll probably adjourn pretty quick here, Don. Thank you. Thank you.
And all we need to do is just adjourn, so.
Yeah, I think we just let Don know when you're ready.
Pardon me?
Let Don know when you're ready.
Yeah.
Okay, we are back from our closed session, and this meeting is adjourned.